Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 at 6:30 in the evening. Welcome. It's good to see all the councilors here. I hope you had a great Thanksgiving. It's dark, cold, and rainy. It's December. Council members, you have meetings of the November 26th meeting in front of you, and do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes of the November 26th meeting as presented.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. I think we have partnerships with Community Living. Are they making us short? There you go. We get right to it.
Oh, good. We do have our video.
Good evening, and welcome to city council.
Thank you very much. You can stand up here close to me.
I'm wondering where it is.
Well, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm pretty sure a lot of you know partnerships in Community Living. We're started 30 years ago in Polk County. We now have grown over to seven counties in Oregon. We have 700 employees. We have a long-rooted history in Polk County and especially Monmouth and Independence. We're very committed to building the partnerships in our community.
Hi, my name is Heather Franks.
And there's Heather. And we're very committed in our community in building relationships with not only the people we support, their families, our staff, and our community. And so, we just like to periodically get out and just remind people that we're here, share our message, the work that we do in the advocacy for people with disabilities in our community. We were just talking earlier tonight that there's almost 15 percent of Oregon's are living with a disability, and one in four of those are children. So, I think that's when you start to think about that, all the people in our communities that are impacted or that all of us know someone potentially living with a disability, it makes the work that we do very important and that we want to make sure that we're out there just sharing it and the work that we do. I do want to introduce the Heather video. Heather is someone that we support and is a very great spokesperson. She's part of what we call Spark. It's a self-advocacy group. And PCL is their fiscal umbrella organization that they, and it's fully organized and run by people with disabilities. And we'll share Heather's video.
I've been with PCL for three, for six, to five years, and I'm loving every bit of it. I wanted a new start, and I didn't like where I was living. I didn't get to go many places. But with PCL, I get to go lots of places. Some of my long-term goals include moving out into an apartment, being able to live on my own as independent as I can, doing my job that I love, which is hiring the new people at PCL, which is my job. I love my job. What makes life good is my life is what makes life good. I recently got married to a wonderful husband named Alan Wodorski. It was love at first sight. I'm also going to Camp Gravenhorst this year. Camp Gravenhorst is a camp that PCL puts on every year. It's got from basketball, it's a bunch of sports. They have ponies, there's cabins, there's swimming pools. It's themed every year, and it's really, really fun. I was in a bowling league at one point. I do Special Olympics, too, but that's all the clubs I'm in. It's not really a club, it's more of a group. Oh, I am involved in Spark, a self-advocacy group where people with disabilities like me and other ones can speak and say what they have to say, and they can speak it without being, you know, laughed at or anything. I'm a big part of Spark. I'm actually the treasurer. PCL is a place where people can get supported and live out their dreams and, you know, goals. They're working with you to help you do what you want to do, what the individual wants, not what the staff wants. Gives an opportunity to just show what they are made of and what they can do. I'm a big-hearted person that loves to help. Anything else you would like to know?
Okay. I didn't know some of you have seen that before. I've seen it 100 times, and I never get tired of it. Erica has some really important things to share, but I, a couple of things that Heather touched on that I really, really appreciate is living, allowing, one of PCL's fundamental goals is making sure that people live the life that they choose, that they want to, and that PCL is always on that forefront of the person-centered language, person-centered living. And Spark is a huge component of that, and they're also a huge component of advocacy in the legislature, and we really appreciate all of the work that they do. And one of our, well, maybe I'll touch on really quickly, yeah, really quickly, the five programs at PCL, we have five programs and then two major fundraising campaigns. And the five programs are our children's services, which we know is a greatly needed service in Oregon at this time. We have our day services program, making sure that people are setting goals and going out and being in their community and being integrated into their community. We have our residential services, and we have our individual services, and then, I'm going to talk about the other one in just a second. What's Erica's? And then our two major campaigns right now are My Home, My Life, and My Home, My Life is a fundraising campaign that is bridging the financial gap for people. Especially right now, what's happening is all the individuals that were moved out of Fairview and are in homes and in their community are now aging, and they're getting older, they're becoming more wheelchair-bound, and we're needing to address the accessibility in their homes. So, that's a primary function right now. PCL is helping them bridge that financial gap and making their homes accessible. And then, our other one is making sure that everyone we support has a meaningful holiday experience, and that's through our Christmas fund. And so, those are our two. And then, one of our near and dear projects and programs that we're working on is our employment and job launch program.
My name is Erica Brown, so I'm the director of Job Launch Services at PCL, which, as Sarah said, is our employment division. So, this community, Monmouth and Independence, has been so welcoming of people with developmental disabilities. And I know since day one of taking people out of Fairview Mental Hospital, the work that our agency has done to integrate and create meaningful partnerships and relationships in this community has, it's been really successful, and I can't thank our community enough for the welcoming arms that they gave that population. My job, coming to PCL about, I think, six years ago now, Oregon adopted what's called the Oregon, the Employment First Initiative, which is an initiative that recognizes employment as the number-one priority in the lives of people with developmental disabilities. We've done our jobs as communities to give people safe, healthy homes to live in and communities to live in, but our next step in that evolution is true integration through employment. So, a large part of what my team does, which is the Job Launch Team, we accept referrals from county and vocational rehabilitation services to help people with disabilities identify what they want to do and get into their workforce, because we have a huge untapped population of people that want to work and want to contribute, but have not historically had services that facilitate that for them and help them find those job matches that are important to them, that will lead to success. We never want charity hires. We're never asking our communities or employers to hire people because they have a disability. We want them to hire people because they have skills that they can bring to their team, and they can be integrated members of their team. We have, since our inception in 2015, since I developed that program and developed our team, we have placed over 85 people with developmental disabilities into jobs in the Marion and Polk County areas. A large part of the population we serve are youth in transition. Partner very closely with Central High School, Dallas High School, Salem Kaiser Schools. Those kids who historically have not been involved, have not been mainstreamed in their classrooms, have not had career planning done, are now under the Employment First Initiative, being brought up in mainstream classrooms where they are career planning alongside all of their peers, and they have an expectation to join the workforce like all of us did. And our communities need to be welcoming of that and open and understanding to that need and the importance and the richness it brings to our communities. So, we currently, I made a little list, currently in Monmouth and the Monmouth and Independence area, some of our employers that have reached out and partnered with us are Monmouth Fitness and the Independence Hotel, Mike's, or the White's Auto Collision, there it is, the pub, and the new Jack's Pub down there. Ray has been a huge supporter of PCL for many years, the owner there. Yeah, so, our message today is we wanted to just, like Sarah said, reiterate what PCL is and the population we support, but also just in your circles and in your conversations to be advocating and spreading the word, I guess, around integration and helping our businesses stay open and willing to partner with PCL and other agencies that are doing a similar job. There are, it's statewide, it's nationwide, it's a huge initiative, and thank you guys for the support you've given us so far and for the opportunity to come here today to talk about this.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to come and visit with us. Thank you. I don't see anybody else that has filled out a speaker card to speak under visitor comments. I know many of you are here for the appeals hearing. So, we're going to move promptly forward since we have a number of things today. Under my report, I have some commission appointments that you have in your packet, and if somebody would like to suggest action.
Just have a question first. One of these applications is dated back to August. Is there a reason we hadn't seen it before?
We just hadn't done all the, hadn't called and talked to everybody yet.
Okay. In that case, I move to approve the two appointments, one to the Planning Commission and one to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Have a motion. Second, discussion.
I just want to say, I think that while I appreciate Ms. Middlestadt applying for the Planning Commission, I don't believe she has the skill set required for the Planning Commission. Ms. Devane, on the other hand, who originally applied for the Planning Commission and now apparently has changed it to the Historic Preservation Commission, does have the skills for the Planning Commission. I'd like to recommend that we instead put her forward to the Planning Commission.
So, I have a motion, a second, on approving all that we have here. Anybody else?
I guess my only question to the councilors, I don't know either of these people, so, was there a reason why there was change or why one decided to go one way and one way?
I don't know why. I visited with both of them.
Okay.
And visited with both, and both have said that's okay. I didn't ask for any switches or anything like that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And I did, I was at the last museum commission meeting, and there was discussion about the one person going for historic preservation, and they were given a recommendation.
Good.
That it would be a good fit.
Okay.
I don't know either of them either, so.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Under other reports that I have, I had the opportunity to be involved with our sister city at tree lighting, and I know a number of you were involved in the holiday festivals this weekend. It was busy, even the rain, and thank everybody for being involved in the parade. And then, I have something to say, that our librarian, Robert Huesetti, has been with us for 30, 33 years, and this is going to be her last council meeting. And so, I have on behalf of the council, we have just a card that we'd like to give you just to say thank you for all that you've done over so many years. And, you know, the community's changed a lot over the years, and Robin helped be part of that, and the library has become a place, you know, 130,000 people a year go through the library, and it is wonderful and warm and friendly place. And while we've written small little bits, please know that thank you so much for all you've done for our community for so long. Let's keep our big round. Mr. Pesamir, I think it's your turn.
Yes, well, and I also, just from the city staff side, want to publicly thank and recognize Bob for a stellar career that she's done here. She's taken that library from next to nothing to what you see today, which is a library that is respected and admired by many communities, and that is all due to a lot of her work, a lot of her ability to partner with other people and to activate and get volunteers to fundraise and to do the hard work that it takes to make the great library that we have. And so, she will be missed greatly here at the city. She has done amazing, every minute of her retirement. We will be having a retirement get-together for her, but we're going to do it in January. Just with all this time of the year, we want to make sure that we're really respecting all of the hard work that she's done. So, getting to my city manager report, I have a number of things. You had a hard time getting in and out of City Hall this week. That is largely because we had a crisis intervention class, but law enforcement does. They take crisis intervention very seriously, and there were very many, a great number of officers here, making sure that they know how to handle those situations in a proactive way and make sure that people are getting the help that they need. So, we're glad to host that and glad we could do that again this year. Winterfest, I'm sure some of you will talk about this, but from staff side, it was a big success. Glad that we were able to help put that together. There were over 1,000 people in the downtown. Businesses were thriving and doing very well. And I want to say shout-out for our Public Works and Police Department that went ahead and put together floats for the event. That took a lot of time, some volunteer times, but the parade was actually bigger this year, and I think a lot of renewed energy, so it was good to have them do that. This has been announced before, but I want to repeat it, give a little bit more detail. We are the recipient of an Oregon Heritage Grant through the Oregon State Parks for $3,000. This, the Oregon Heritage Grant supports projects related to the conservation, development, and interpretation of Oregon's cultural heritage. Specifically, we're going to use that money to increase the accessibility of the archives through better organization, physical preservation, and digitization. The measurable outcomes of the work will include inputting at least 1,000 pieces of archival material that have yet to be put into the PAST perfect system. This will allow researchers to find the material and information quickly when they come to take a look at. So, good job to our staff for getting that put together and for the other people that helped on that, it's much appreciated. We have placed online here just recently, an online version of the 2040 survey. This is the same, roughly the same material that was done at the town hall. We're continuing to look for additional information. We're at that point where we're trying to start to clump things into groups and to start to identify those projects which rise to the top. We had a lot of citizen input on this, and now we're trying to do that. So, we're encouraging everybody to go online, take that survey. It has focus areas, initiatives, and action-based items that are based on community feedback. It has a survey that will help identify anything that was left out, as well as priorities for the community. That will be open until the 20th of December, so people need to get up there fairly quickly. Something that we're pretty happy and proud about is over the last year, we've done 17 different tour groups with interested groups about learning about our downtown revitalization and riverfront improvements. These are groups like Set Core, Board of Directors, Oregon Partner Recreation Commission, Business of Oregon Commission, Government Regional Solutions Team, the Oregon Economic Development Association, Urban Noodle Group, as well as a lot of individual communities have come by. We've also had at least that many other meetings with phone calls and communities interested in various aspects of the work that we're doing and how they can replicate that in their towns. And we already have requests for this year from the League of Oregon City Board of Directors and the Oregon Mayor's Association for 2020. And so, those are items that we're glad to do. We're glad that people want to come and see what's happening in the riverfront and the downtown area and the things that are there. I will say they are somewhat time-intensive, and they certainly are something that we have to organize and do a fair number of things on our list. So, we're happy to do that. It's great, it's building on each other, and we enjoy doing that. But it also has been something that has taken a fair amount of staff time. So, as you all know, we put out a request for proposal for the Event Center concession. We advertised that heavily, and we certainly got that word out, and we're interested in seeing what we would get back. We did only receive one response from a Barkdaro Holdings group. It was an excellent proposal. It scored very well for the people who looked at it. They seemed to understand exactly what we were asking for. It was a very thorough and detailed response. And so, unless you have any concerns, I think staff would like to go move forward and start working on some sort of agreement so we can share some of these responsibilities and they can take over some of these groups, especially the ones that are interested in staying at the hotel and take some of the responsibilities off the staff to put all these together, to manage all the time and everything else. We will still have the opportunity, I think, to do, based on the proposal, city-sponsored events and things just like we do, but some of those bigger ones and some of the ones that make more sense, to have somebody else run them, we would enter into a sharing agreement with them, so.
So, are you proposing to work this up and then you're bringing it back to us? Is that what the plan is?
That's correct, yeah. Unless there's concerns, we basically would enter into working together on agreement. We would bring that back to you. If we had any concerns, we would bring those back to you early, but certainly it would be an agreement that came to you with time for you to look at over and make sure that it meets your standards before it was approved, so.
Did I hear some other people asking, I think we're all asking the same questions?
You covered it, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's okay. I don't see anybody, okay?
All right. That's the conclusion of my report, but if you have any questions for me or staff?
Questions for staff at this point? Okay, thank you. We're going to, we have a lot to do tonight, so we're going to move forward. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the appeal for the Brandy Meadows subdivision. I have an extensive script that I have to read, and so, I will begin reading. I'll now open the public hearing on an appeal of S U B 21901, 201901, at 7 o'clock. Name's John McCartell, I'm the mayor in chairing this hearing. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with Independence Development Code and state law, O R S 197.763 specifically. The staff will first present the staff report and recommendations. The applicant will then have an opportunity to present the proposal and address any issues raised by the staff report and recommendation. For public testimony, I will first ask to hear from people who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. I will then ask to hear from people who have neutral comments or questions about the proposal, literally neither for or against. Finally, those in opposition to the proposal will have an opportunity to present testimony, starting with the appellant's. City staff may then present additional material and recommendations based on the public testimony. The applicant will be given the opportunity to have the last word. After each presentation, I will ask for questions from the council. Because this is an appeal of the Planning Commission decision, testimony should be directed only to the applicable criteria upon which the appeals filed with the city are based. If you intend to present oral testimony, please fill out a request to speak located in the back room, and I think, all right, will be limited to 10 minutes, and we're being respectful of all the folks in the room. In order to minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group, and other members of the organization can stand to show their support. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium at the request of a council member to answer a question. Thank you for your cooperation with these rules. Now, the mayor and the council is required to disclose any conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts that we've had with the proposal or the applicant. That is, whether we have any financial or other personal interests in the proposal, which we have, and whether we have spoken with anybody about the proposal outside of the hearing. Also, councilors may only participate if they can do so without undue bias for or against the application. Do any councilors wish to make any disclosures? Everybody okay? I think we're all okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any challenges from the audience to the conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or bias related to any member of the council? I don't see anybody jumping up. Okay. State law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicable substantive criteria that apply to this application are contained in the written staff report and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report. Second, your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city-adopted plans that you believe apply to this application. That's required by O R S 1977635, Part B. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this application based on the issue, and that's O R S 1977635C. Finally, to the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with specific, with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues, preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court, O R S 1977963B. Okay, that's enough of me talking. I'm going to have staff please present the staff report.
Thank you very much. Hi there, councilmembers, audience. My name is Fred E. Vander. I'm the city planner here, and I'm here to present on the appeal for the Brandy Meadows subdivision, phases two, three, and four. Now, the Brandy Meadows subdivision is located in the southwest portion of the city of Independence. It's a 67-lot subdivision to include 81 housing units. There's 47 single-family lots, 11 duplex lots, eight lots for townhomes, and one lot for a four-unit apartment building. Now, you can see Brandy Meadows Phase 1 is in the blue there. Brandy Meadows, phases two, three, and four are proposed in the area shown to the, in the yellow. Also, I'll call out real quick, you can see the south fork of Ash Creek running on the west part of that site right there, as Karen is showing too, and that will be a key component of your consideration tonight. Basically, when evaluating this development, we looked at all of Independence' applicable review documents, the comprehensive plan, the transportation system plan, the Southwest Independence Concept Plan, the Southwest Independence Collector Extension Project, and of course, our development code. And the Planning Commission, and you got the staff reports that went to the Planning Commission, they went through literally every applicable criteria within those documents that apply to this development. We, the Planning Commission heard this application over the course of two public hearings, or it was one public hearing, extended to two nights on September 9th and September 23rd. And basically, they distilled all of that material into a unanimous decision on this application with 21 conditions of approval. Those 21 conditions are in the staff report that you folks received tonight. Now, when we sent out that decision, we sent it out to people within 250 feet of the project, and we did receive an appeal, and you'll be hearing from the appellant tonight. Basically, the appellant argues four fundamental things, and I've the appellant argues four fundamental things, and I summarized those within the staff report tonight. The four fundamental arguments is that the land use approval was somehow an error. There's no criterion to evaluate that claim, and I would dispute it. I did dispute it within the staff report. The multi-use trail easements, the riparian zone easements, and the open space network. Now, when we're going through this, and when the Planning Commission went through this, basically, to make a decision, we have to have a code basis to base that decision on. And so, you can see on this page here, I noted the code basis that these decisions were based on or could be based on. Now, the first one, multi-use, there we go, multi-trail easements. Now, the criterion for this is if located within the Southwest Independence Concept Plan area, the location and width of streets, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and the trails, stormwater and riparian corridor along Ash Creek have to be consistent with the Southwest Independence Plan. It says that you have to submit information that is, that shows that. Now, the plan itself calls for a linked trail system. It talks about it specifically along the South Fork of Ash Creek, other open space corridors, and within proposed stormwater management trail corridors. Now, that statement sort of is accompanied by this map, and you can see that this map shows the big green right there, running through, that's the South Fork of Ash Creek. You'll see that on this, in this document here, and it calls also for a series of bike paths along collector roads throughout the southwest area. Now, part of the appellant's argument that you received is that this trail right here, running along the east side of the development, or of the southwest area, right there on the east side, is fundamental to this open space concept. And so, so that's part of the argument that you'll, you'll see tonight. His argument, too, was that this trail was supposed to be 30 feet wide. Now, in looking at the plan, and I gotta say that it could be written in a clear way, but in the plan, it's, it makes it clear that these 30-foot-wide trails are meant to apply to intermittent drainages, right? And then, it provides a map of what these intermittent drainages are. They're on the west side of the southwest area. They're not on the Brandy Meadows site. This is the Brandy Meadows site right here, on the, on the east side, South Fork Ash Creek, right there. Brandy Meadows, the intermittent drainages are on the west side of the creek, not the east side. So, then the question becomes, what is this trail shown on the east side of Brandy Meadows? It just calls it a stormwater slash trail, and it just shows it on the map. There's no narrative to accompany it at all. So, it's really unclear what that is supposed to be. But, it's very nice that just three years later, the city prepared a parks plan, and the parks plan, to my mind, clarifies the need for that trail. If there was a trail, a need for that trail, the parks plan, which came three years later, would surely reflect the need, is what, is what I would anticipate. Well, this plan, in fact, does not show a trail along the east side of Brandy Meadows. Why is that? Well, for one, Sunset Meadows had been completed in the interim, and as the parks plan shows, a trail is going through the park in Sunset Meadows. That trail is about 400 feet away from that north-south trail on the east side of, that was shown on the east side of Brandy Meadows. My thought is that, that whoever drafted this, and you, and whoever adopted this, was thinking that this trail was, met the intent, met the goal of a looped trail system through the City of Independence that was envisioned in both the Southwest Plan and the Parks and Open Space Plan. So, again, the criteria is, it's, the Southwest Plan is seeking a linked trail system within the planning area, and it seems clear to me that when we see what this development will achieve with a trail along the South Fork of Ash Creek that eventually links to Sunset Meadows Park and then up into Inspiration Garden, and keep in mind, as this is developed right here, the trail will continue here, that is achieving a linked park system in the southwest of Independence, absolutely. Is that criterion met? Yes, absolutely, it seems in my, in my perspective. Now, the second argument relates to riparian zone easements, and you'll see that the criterion to evaluate this is there shall be a 25-foot greenway setback required along the banks of Ash Creek, and it talks about where that exactly begins. Now, this is sort of how Ash Creek, the South Fork of Ash Creek goes through Inspiration Garden, and so you, and I mean, I've been out on the site. It, it follows this general sort of thing right here. Now, 25 feet starts at the banks of the creek, right, and goes 25 feet. When you look at the site, again, this is 25 feet right here. When you measure 25 feet right there, it's clear that all development is going to be outside of that 25-foot setback. Is this criterion met? Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Now, the third one relates to open space resources. Again, looking at the criterion, it's the same criterion as the first one. This criterion, it seems to me, again, is absolutely met. The policy within the open space, within the Southwest Plan says the city will support green development approaches, including co-location of stormwater swales in parks and along linear trail corridors to reduce land needs and costs and create opportunities for education amenities and recreational activities. It's a great, it's a great policy. The, it's, this is how that was envisioned in the Southwest Plan. You can see, there's the South Fork of Ash Creek right there. You can see trails. You can see open space in that area. Now, again, this is what the project is proposing. It's proposing a stormwater facility that can double as a park, right? We've specifically made it clear through the conditions for the proposal that we, we would like this stormwater facility to be designed flat so it can double as recreational land, not just a stormwater facility. You can see that that stormwater facility is, will be next to a trail. Again, it seems to me that that is, that achieves what the Southwest Plan was looking for. The guidance language in the document says we need to consider what we're capable of administering. The Southwest Plan originally envisioned more decentralized stormwater treatment. Looking at that, that's difficult to maintain, having stormwater spread throughout the site, and we think having a, a single system makes more sense for, for maintenance and all that stuff. It definitely makes more sense. So, anyways, the policy, again, the city will support green development approaches. Is that criterion met? From my perspective, absolutely yes. So, those are the criteria that you folks will be considering tonight, and you will be basing your decision on. From my perspective, this development achieves, it achieves what the Southwest Plan was talking about. It achieves a linked network of trails, right, especially as it connects to Sunset Meadows to the east, and it starts connecting, starts the connection to Independence Garden on the north. It achieves a joint park and stormwater facility with a trail in it, right? It achieves what that was envisioning in that plan. Also, I'll just say, the Planning Commission went through, it looked at things like transportation, it looked at things like how the bridge is going to work, like what street should be considered collector streets. We have considered a number of these things, and not just with the Southwest Area Plan. This development fits very well within all of the City of Independence's plans. So, that's my staff report for tonight. Are there any questions?
Questions for the presenter?
Fred, can you just go over one more time the numbers? 67 lots, how many houses? And break that down for me, please?
Yes, so, 67-lot subdivision to include 81 housing units, 47 single-family, 11 duplex lots, so that makes 22 duplex units, eight lots for townhomes, and one lot for a four-unit apartment building.
Is anything along the, in that group earmarked for low income?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
So, yeah, just a quick question. It comes under the riparian zone easement section. You showed us the lovely picture of Ash Creek. We discussed the 25-foot setbacks. I read your report. It is addressed there. I just want to make sure it's addressed here this evening. And the 25-foot setback was from the banks or the high-water mark. Does Ash Creek and that location ever breach the banks? Because that would then affect the setback.
Right. So, typically, when you measure high-water mark, it's based on ordinary high-water mark, and so, it's where the vegetation changes on the, on the, on the banks. So, you know, if you go out there with a biologist, a lot of times, they can actually point, ordinary high water is right there. You know, they'll see it based on a vegetation break. I do not believe that high water means the highest that it's ever gone.
No, understood, because I think it actually uses its term, yeah, like regular high-water mark. So, I guess the question is, does it regularly breach the banks?
Does it regularly breach the banks? We anticipate that it floods there. It is a map flood zone above the banks. What, and I'll show you in the map. The, ooh, hey, I got really close to the map.
I'm just trying to figure where we're actually determining that 25 feet from.
So, the map flood, the map flood plane is higher than where we're determining that 25 feet from. Do you see map flood plane right there?
And I guess, why, why is that? Why aren't we using?
Why aren't we using higher? That's a good question. I've, that's what the code says? 25, 25 feet? I mean, I'll just, I'll just-
Of the bank or high-water mark?
So, I think, I think we're meaning the flood plane is not a regular high-water mark.
Thank you.
Right, yeah. The flood plane is not, yes, exactly. Flood plane and high-water mark are not synonymous.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions down on this side, please? Anybody?
Not yet.
Not yet. I think that's, that's a good one. Okay, that's good. Thank you very much, and we may be speaking again.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry. If Fred's prepared, I would love also to have a little overview of any written comments we've received to date, and noting which do and don't pertain to applicable criteria. Is that something you're prepared to do now, or you want to do that at the end?
Oh, yeah. So, we have, I'll do it at the end.
Okay.
Do it at the end.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, the next part is that the applicant gets to speak, and I think he is the applicant. Good evening. And you have 10 minutes, please.
Oh, thank you all.
Good evening and welcome, first of all. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for your time tonight. For the record, Harvey Cummings, 16240 Southeast Bel Air Drive, Damascus, Oregon. Well, I think it's important to know who the developer is on this project. The developer can make a big difference in the outcome of the project. Mr. Senkel and myself are the developers on this project. We're both registered professional civil engineers. Additionally, I've worked 30 years as a consultant, working with many developers on a variety of projects. I also served on the Code Development Committee for the City of Damascus and went on to chair the Planning Commission for several years. Our Planning Commission was tasked with putting together a comprehensive development plan for the entire city. During that process, we had a constant stream of specialists coming before us to educate us on the do's and don'ts of good planning. We studied everything from dark skies and wildlife corridors to regional stormwater, open spaces, pedestrian connectivity, parks, et cetera, and transitions between lower-density and higher-density residential zones, which is applicable to this appeal. In my experience, I've seen a lot of good developments and bad development. Most of the bad developments were on smaller lots surrounded by developments that had been built out piecemeal with little or no regional planning. These subdivisions would meet all the criteria set forth by the city codes, so the city was forced to approve them. But ultimately, these subdivisions would decrease the livability and sense of community in the area. This problem has led to cities doing more regional planning, such as the Southwest Independence Concept Plan. This allowed cities to write codes to better provide opportunity to create more livable communities. This brings us to the Southwest Independence Concept Plan. Mr. Senkel and myself both served on the advisory board for the Southwest Independence Concept Plan. During that time, both Jeff and I were very strong advocates for parks, open spaces, and pedestrian connectivity. We understand the importance of these. With Brandy Meadows, one of the first things we needed to look at was the topography and where the stormwater would need to go. From there, we were able to determine the best locations for regional stormwater facilities and parks. Finally, that data informed us as to the best locations for pedestrian corridors. I can appreciate Mr. Clark's desire to make sure the project has adequate parks and pedestrian connectivity. As for the proposed locations of the pedestrian corridor in Mr. Park's appeal, with all due respect, I believe the proposed locations would be detrimental to the overall livability of the development. No offense, but I think they're just simply in a bad place for pedestrian corridors, considering the location of future stormwater facilities, transitions from lower-density residential to higher-density residential zone, and the location of our proposed higher-density areas. Let me be clear, I completely agree with Mr. Clark and the community. Pedestrian corridors and open spaces are critical. The, we consider these to be the most important issues to create a great place to live. This application for Phases 2, 3, 4 does provide sidewalks and bike paths to access the proposed park area and future proposed pedestrian corridors. We are also providing a pedestrian corridor along Ash Creek to ultimately connect to Inspiration Gardens and Southern Independence. Finally, I agree with the city staff, the planning and the Planning Commission's unanimous decision that this application meets all the requirements set forth in the city codes and therefore should be approved. Thank you.
Are there questions for the applicant at this point? Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Are there others who wish to speak in favor of the, the project? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Senkel, and I'm a member of Brandy Properties, LLC. I live at 40573 Southeast Cupich Road, Sandy, Oregon. I have prepared a written statement that I'd like to read to you.
Please.
Feel free to cut me off. It's going to go longer than the timeframe. Give me a couple lines at the end so I can conclude.
Thank you.
First, I would like to state we agree with the staff report for this appeal. We have worked closely with the city staff on our development supplemental, and I believe we have met all of the city's development criteria for this development. Now, I'm going to go over the appeal bit by bit. I am sorry if some of this will seem redundant. Section 1, land use approval. The executive summary of the Southwest Independence Concept Plan states the following. Additional land use approvals will be required prior to development to the scale and density envisioned in this concept plan, the plan, including but not limited to preparation of master plans during the annexation process to identify parks and open space corridors as applicable. Our responses, Brandy Properties did submit a master plan at the time of annexation in 2006. 2006. He states subdivisions to divide land in accordance with detailed master plan dedicate local street parks and trail and utility easements. Our response is Brandy Properties is dividing the land per our master plan and the City of Independence Development Code. He writes, "To be consistent with the plan, the city should prepare a master plan for the parks and multi-use trail network in the planning area prior to approval of the proposal." Our response is, "The city does have a master plan for parks and multi-use trail networks. It is the 2015 City of Independence Parks and Open Space Master Plan. This plan incorporates and updates the 2012 Independence Concept Plan. Brandy Properties is meeting matching the city's master plan." The appellant writes, "The city should dedicate easements for parks and trails in the planning area prior to approving proposals for housing lots." Our response is, "The city cannot dedicate easements prior to approval because they do not own the land. This is done during the final plat approval. Brandy Properties has shown on the application for development and the conditions of approval that we are dedicating parkland and trail easements per the city's master plans." Section two, multi-use trail easements. The applicant writes, "To be consistent with the plan, the city should dedicate easements for parks and trails prior to approving proposals for housing lots." Again, our response is, "The city cannot dedicate easements prior to approval because they do not own the land. This is done during the final plat approval. Brandy Properties has shown on the application for development and the conditions of approval that we are dedicating parkland and trail easements per the city's master plans." The applicant continues, "Because Brandy Meadows Phase One does not include a path on its east side, in order to be compliant with the plan, the city should dedicate a multi-use trail easement beginning in the northeast part of the planning area along the west boundary of the stormwater swell adjacent to Inspiration Garden, running south along the west border of Sunset Meadows." Our response is, "The 2012 Southwest Independence Concept Plan was incorporated and updated in the 2015 City of Independence Parks and Open Space Master Plan. This updated plan shows the path location was moved approximately 400 feet to the east. Brandy Properties is meeting matching this updated plan."
If you could wrap up, that would be helpful.
Okay. So, in conclusion-
Thank you.
I believe our submitted development meets all of the city's requirements, not only for this appeal, but in all respects. I respectfully ask the city to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you make sure to turn your written comments over to Karen so she can make sure that, that the part you didn't get to read is in the official record, I do appreciate that. Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak in favor at this point? Okay. Neutral testimony, I've got a variety of, some are marked in some different ways. So I'm going to ask that, does anybody have spoken or written testimony that is neutral, that is not, that is legitimately neutral? I don't see anybody jumping up. Okay. Now, those who are opposed may speak. We're gonna start with the appellant, and I think, Mr. Attorney, I think, are you representing the appellant this evening?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And if, Mr. Hill, please, you have ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilor, city staff. For the record, my name is Wes Hill. I'm a partner with Martiniston Hill. My offices are located at 110 Madrona Avenue, Southeast in Salem. I represent Dr. Clark, and so I'm gonna give a short presentation. With your permission, I'm gonna yield back the balance of my time for Mr. Clark to be able to, he's got a PowerPoint presentation that he wants to present you with, and to the extent he's not able to get through that, we'd like to have that submitted-
Of course.
-for the record. Thank you. The first issue I'd like to address is both in the latest staff report and in the, in staff's comments tonight about the applicable criteria, and whether, whether or not the appellant has identified the appropriate and proper criteria. And so, what I would say to that is, the Southwest Independence Concept Plan was adopted as an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan. And so, and then further, it was adopted by reference into the comprehensive plan. So those things that are in the Southwest, uh, plan are, are criteria for which, that are, that are relevant to this appeal and to this subdivision application. And in fact, I would point you to the original staff report, which was August 30th, 2019, and at page one of thirty-five of the staff's findings, the original staff report acknowledged that the Southwest Concept Plan supersedes the con, the comp plan to the extent that there are any, any conflicts therein. So as such, the appeal is based on specific criteria, and some of the additional criteria that Dr. Clark will address in his, in his presentation are, meet the, the Concept Plan and also the Parks Plan. So now I wanna focus on the riparian setback. I wanna start there. And so we've had some discussion that, let me start by telling you that I don't think you have sufficient competent evidence in the record to show you that, in fact, the twenty-five-foot setback has been or can be met in this, in this situation. In fact, what I would tell you is that in preparing for my remarks this evening, I actually hired Jim Hepler of Asymet Surveying to look at the maps that are in the application, and to try and scale for me, and figure out whether or not he could determine, as a surveyor, whether or not those setbacks can or have been, have been met. And so, he notes a couple of things that I think are germane to the discussion we had earlier. First of all, the Independence Development Code does not call to the ordinary high-water mark, and so there's some ambiguity as to what we're talking about. And so he ultimately was not able to, to determine that the twenty-five-foot setback could be met. And so I would like, I have a report from him with his stamp, and I'd like to submit that to the report for the record. And so, so the argument there is that you don't have competent, competent evidence to, to have the finding that it has been or can be met, been met. And so, the high-water mark, not the ordinary high-water mark, but the, the high-water mark and the top of bank, those are equivalent things. And so, in the Independence Code, it says either of those, whichever is higher. So that means something else is meant by that. So not only do you have an ambiguity in the code, but under the circumstances here, the neat, none of those things, whether it's ordinary high-water mark, high-water mark, or, or the top of bank, none of those are identified in the multi-tech drawings that you have before you, upon which the, this decision was made at the Planning Commission. Looking at the issue, oh, one other thing I wanted to tell you, the, the issue on the thirty-foot width, thirty-foot widths, that, that part of the appeal has been withdrawn. So we, we do agree that, that part of the code could be written better, but we also agree that there's a misunderstanding there, and so we no longer are asking you for the thirty-foot width on the trails. For the land use approval, part, portion of it, I would just point to you that, um, specific to subdivisions, the comp plan requires dedication of local parks and trails. The staff, the most recent staff report said that this is just a, not a policy statement, but rather just a general description or discussion of what has to happen. But if you look at that, it is specific to, to subdivisions. And so specifically, Dr. Clark is objecting to an approval without plating, you know, where, where those trails are gonna be. Same with the multi-trail easements. And I'm gonna let Dr. Talk, Dr. Clark talk more about this and use his expertise to tell you, because there's, there's some, uh, staff has said that we, you know, because of the way that the trail was approved on the east side, that it's not necessary, and everybody's focusing on connectivity, and I'll leave this for Dr. Clark, but it's not just connectivity that's important in the Southwest Plan, but it's also accessibility to a diverse population. And I'll let him talk to you more about that. And then finally, the last thing that I want to leave you with is looking at condition twenty of the staff report, if I can get there quickly. Basically, the trail along the South Fork of Ash Creek shown on the future street plan shall be completed prior to the final plat approval for phase four of the subdivision. But if I, when I look at the future street plan, which is at sheet fourteen of the multi-tech maps, there, there is no plan there for, for any trails. There are no trails identified. So that, that condition of approval by itself doesn't, doesn't do anything from, from my perspective. So if I have time left, I would yield that to Dr. Clark. Ask that he speak next, please.
Please.
Good evening, and welcome to council.
Thank you. Before I start, I, I would like to ask the city council if I could have a little bit more time, ten minutes. I hadn't been informed that there was gonna be a time limit, and I put together a PowerPoint presentation, and I went over a lot of the pertinent statements from the Southwest Concept Plan and the park and open space.
Thank you for asking, but I think we need to, to treat both, both parties equally. But thank you for asking in advance. I do appreciate that.
Okay. What I'd like to start out is by emphasizing that the city council members tonight have a real opportunity for improving the livability of our community, as well to promote a healthy lifestyle for residents and visitors. I encourage you to not move forward with development without due diligence in designing and creating a trail network, which will contribute greatly to the quality of life for the people that live here. I think it's important to design and set aside the land for the trail network before approving house, housing development proposals. Designing the trail network as a whole also makes it easier to have a consistent and efficient means of maintaining the areas. I will demonstrate that the single trail included in the present proposal does not serve the following groups well: children and their families, senior citizens, people with chronic diseases or ability limitations, and some pet owners. I would also like to persuade you the value, value of enhancing the trail network system to improve access to and to showcase Inspiration Garden, which has evolved into a real gem of an outdoor resource for the people of Independence. I will also be encouraging you to think more in terms of linear parks in the form of a well-developed trail system network in light of the vision of the park and open space master plan, as well as public input collected to guide decision-making as documented in the park and open space master plan.
Oh, sorry. I have my online stopwatch going, sorry.
Oh, okay. So, I, Mr. Hill already addressed this, but I was mistaken about the trail and stormwater width. It was a misreading of the plan, and I retract that. I just wanna read you very briefly the recommended park and open space vision, and this comes from the Park and Open Space Master Plan 2015. And the main one there is that it's, one of its main purposes is to promote community livability and lifelong physical health. The park and open space plan talks about several different topics, the critical community functions, state and national trends, Oregon's physical activity crisis, and I'll try to touch real quickly on public input that you guys solicited. The nation's local parks and recreations are the gateways to healthy, prosperous, and connected communities. And again, this is from the Park and Open Space Plan. Local parks and recreations are uniquely positioned to make significant contributions in these areas, and, and do so by providing critical frontline services and resources. I think this is really important. Also, local, local parks are the leaders, often the only voice in communities for protecting open space, connecting children to nature, and providing education and programming that help communities engage in conservation practices. And tonight is one of those opportunities to make those things happen. Here are some of the state and national trends that are likely to shape the activities and desires of Independence in the future. Connecting children with nature, health and recreation, obesity and physical exercise, adult senior program preferences, and Oregon's physical activity crisis. The need to connect children with the outdoors is one of the key findings of the 2008, 2012 Oregon statewide comprehensive plan. Addressing what has become to known as nature deficit disorder, and I think we all would nod our heads with that, agencies and park providers across the state are integrating nature into the recreation programs. The adult obesity rate has gradually, has steadily increased from eleven percent in 1990 to twenty-nine percent in 2017, and that obesity rate in Polk County was thirty-six percent. That's a health crisis, and I deal with it on a daily basis. I'm an anesthesiologist, and I've been practicing in the Salem area for thirty-one years.
I'm gonna have to ask you to start wrapping up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
There, I went through a lot of the surveys, and repeatedly, the input from the different public input that you got was about trails hiking, biking, access to natural areas, and active recreation opportunities. That's, yeah, just don't have time for this, unfortunately.
But you, you have given all the written information to, so that we do have that in the record, so we can review that.
Thanks.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Could I just-
Please.
With this, this, so with all that input, with all the planning, with all the words in the Park and Open Space Plan, and the Southwest Concept Plan, this is the path that we have for, for the present time, for, at the present time for the plans. And it's a single trail, it's, it encloses a hundred forty-six acres of land, and it's a little over twenty-one miles long, or two, two, a little over two miles long, and I don't think that that's consistent with what, with the vision that was put forward, as well as the public input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I do appreciate it. Okay, we now have the, oh, excuse me, I, council, did you have questions that you wanted to, to address at this point? I, please?
I don't have a question. I just, in full transparency, I worked at the Polk County Courthouse with Mr. Hill's brother for many years. I just wanna make that disclosure. I've talked to council, it shouldn't be a conflict.
So I just wanna confirm you are able to make an unbiased decision-
Yes.
...based on the record in front of you, uninfluenced by-
Correct. Correct. I didn't even recognize Mr. Hill until he walked up to the podium, and I was, Norm's brother, I need to say something, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for your clarification. Additional questions for the speaker at this point? Thank you, sir. Okay, we now have the, I have a number of people who'd like to speak. If you keep your comments to, to three minutes, please, we are trying to, we have a lot to go through this evening. So Chad Ludwig?
Good evening, and welcome to council.
Thank you, commissioners. I, I wanna add a comment that I hadn't heard addressed. Within our community, I'm in the Sunset community, we have had some concerns, and we have listed them and shared them with the commission, and one of the major concerns has been access to our community. There is one main road to get in and out of our development, and with all the building and all the changes that are going on, this one main road, just this one main street, has commercial vehicles, construction vehicles, emergency vehicles, bicycles, children using it as a place to be able to walk to and from school, that's all we've got, Seventh Street. And that connection leaves us so limited for an exit. We cannot get out through another direction. All vehicles must go through that exact same place. With some consideration about what's going to be needed in the future, Seventh Street certainly isn't gonna be able to provide it, but it absolutely can't provide it during all these development phases. And within that community area, we are asking that there be some development of other connecting streets that can help us get in and out of our community area, even in an emergency, for emergency vehicles. That is one of my primary things that I wanted to share with you. Secondly, because sign language is my main mode of communication, I'm a visual person, and what I'm seeing within the maps, I'm seeing no plan for- and what I'm seeing within the maps, I'm seeing no plan for how those, the Sunset Meadow and Brandy that it will be connected. At this point, I'm seeing no connecting points, and there seems to be quite a break between the two: Sunset Meadows and the new development. I can see there may be some, you would look for some lines, some kind of roadways, some sort of planning for that. There has to be some way that we can share that area, and I am not convinced that any of those things are happening. So those were my two comments I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, do we have an address for that?
Yes, I do.
For the public? Okay. I just want to remind folks when they come up to please give their name and address clearly in the record.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Kristin Larson? Good evening.
Good evening. Kristin Larson, for the record, 165 D Street in Independence. I'm just going to look at my phone so I can read something. So for the record, speaking neither for nor against the proposal, but just a comment. I missed the window earlier. So in reference to the setback requirement mentioned and previously discussed, there should be a 25-foot greenway setback required along. Again, shall begin at the top of the bank or at the high watermark, whichever is higher. So again, I think it was a valid point in terms of clarification of top of bank and high watermark in the questions that were asked. Just quickly looking, at least from the Department of State lands perspective and some of the Oregon administrative rules that DSL uses in terms of looking at top of bank is referred to as bank full stage in Oregon administrative rule, which is then the two-year recurrence flood. And often when we're looking at rivers, I'm also the executive director at the Lucky Mead Watership Council, those are often called the channel forming floods, the two-year recurrence floods. And so they are going to be higher than what was previously discussed at the staff presentation in terms of high water, if you're thinking of ordinary high water, which is really the annual high water. So I think it is important to clarify that. I would also say, when you look at the images of Ash Creek, it's pretty clear water has shaped that channel. So at some point in its history, water has made that channel what it is, also historical and human impacts. But I think in terms of thinking of your development and how far you space it away, 25 feet is not that far, and that's a minimum setback. And that that channel is going to continue to evolve. Climate change is going to have more severe impacts on our systems, more frequent, more intense storms, higher hydrologic impacts, plus adding development to the system. So 25 is a minimum from an unclear starting point, and I think you have discretion to even go further when we think about protecting our streams and rivers in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I have a note from Carol Harriet. She wanted to be known that she's here and she has opinions. She didn't want to speak, but just wanted to be known. Did you? Yes, you may. I'm sorry. I was just following the check mark.
I know.
So good evening and welcome to city council.
Thank you very much. My name is Carol Harriet. I live at 850 Maple Street in Sunset Meadows. Been there. I'm the first owner, the first owner of my house, and I've watched the whole area evolve. I want to reiterate what Chad just said. Those are two huge issues for us in Sunset Meadows. It's kind of like we've been left. We now have a park that goes through the middle of our development that eventually is going to have a walkway through it that just ends. It doesn't connect to anything. I don't see anywhere where it connects to Brandy Meadows, which we thought it would with that east trailway. We thought that was going to connect over to us. But I don't see it in the map. Maybe I'm not clear. It's just clear. There's a lot of stuff out there, and as a novice in this, it's difficult for us as citizens to really understand what it all means to us as we live there. And one of the primary things is connectivity of these pathways in Brandy Meadows such that they are off-street. Because I sit there and I watch these young families with young children on bicycles, and I see people walking their dogs. And a bike lane is not going to work for these families. I wouldn't take my kids on those busy streets, just like Chad said. There's a tremendous amount of traffic defect there, and it's unsafe. Seventh Street's unsafe right now. So I'm just voicing my concerns. And as a resident and wanting a quality community with a great neighborhood, I know those people along Ninth Street that thought there was that easement on the east side are putting their houses up for sale because they were misinformed as to what that was. So it's a dynamic that sometimes you don't think about. Thanks.
Thank you for taking the time to come in. Harvey Cummings? Oh, excuse me. He already spoke. I'm sorry. I've got my pieces of paper here. I've got them, they're marked up in several ways. Excuse me. Judith White? Okay. Thank you. But it is noted that you're here and that, yes, thank you. Marine, Mary, excuse me, Marianne Holtzinger? I'm sorry. I mushed on that one. Good evening and welcome to council.
I'm Marianne Holtzinger, and I live in Sunset Meadows. And just as a point, when I bought that property in Sunset Meadows, one of the selling points was that green belt behind me, you know, having a park. And I was told by the realtor, here's the plan. I even went online. I found the plan. I found the little map that no longer can be accessed, that showed the trails and showed, you know, future development, where roads would be and parks and that kind of thing. And so I was really excited, going, great. So we'll have some neighborhood parks. We'll have everything connected. You can walk downtown. You can walk. All these parks are going to be connected. Get on your bike and you can. So it was really kind of exciting to have that. That was a selling point. So I am concerned a bit that we do not, are not seeing that totally. We didn't see it in the Hayden Homes development when the park was removed from the plan and moved across the street to some future time or space. So that wasn't going to happen. The pathway that's supposed to go through Sunset Meadows kind of ended there at Hayden Homes Development. There is nothing I'm seeing. I've been walking around the Brandy Meadows area, because I walk a lot, as some of you know. But I do walk through the development area to see what's going on, and that is a concern. So where is the, where are the pathways? Where are they going to be connecting? Are they going to be really connecting? When we have these parks, these neighborhood parks, is there going to be parking for people coming from outside the neighborhoods into the neighborhoods? And also, it's a concern. But that is a selling point when new people come in to this community. This community is a vibrant community, and as we're building, we should be planning as is building, not planning after the fact. So once one buys the land, and I think, you know, that Velper is correct. He bought the land. He can do whatever the hell he wants to do with the land. But there are certain ramifications that he has to work within. Notes have to be really clear, and have to be clear also to the people who live here. I do want to make a note, too, because I was reading the notes, that notices went out to people that were 250 feet from the development. Well, I don't live 250 feet from the development. I'm a little bit further on Eighth Street. I didn't get the notice, but it does impact me. So I think it really is important for better communication part of the city council and the planning commission, that when things are happening, that notices get out a little bit better to all the citizens in that area, not just the one street, but surrounding areas. Because it causes, well, makes us talk, which is really great, because we get to know each other. But that's not the kind of talking you want to have going on. You want to construct the talk based on facts that are given to us instead of things that we have to conjure up. If you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want better communication to all of us.
Thank you for taking the time to visit with us. Rebecca J. Good evening and welcome to city council.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca J. I live at 820 Maple Street in Independence. I am in agreement with the appeal. I don't think that you, the plan clearly addresses connectivity. It doesn't address the value of our riparian area or even protecting the houses that are going to be built from flooding. As we add more impermeable surfaces to that area, you're going to have more flooding. And this narrow space, the 25 feet from the high water or bank area, is not going to be enough, because that waterway is going to take in more water as you put more roofs and more hard surfaces there. Plus, the connectivity that is being talked about is nowhere apparent. When you come out of Inspiration Park, you come out onto Maple Street, but the crosswalk is not there where the path comes to Maple Street. It's to the east. And even if you cross the street, you're crossing with no crosswalk, and all these mothers with their babies in their carriages and kids on the bicycles don't have a safe cross path to this strip of land that has no path in it, no trees, no nothing. And when you get past that, there's one block of a cement pathway, and then Hayden Homes has built all the way south from there. So I don't see how you're going to have connectivity to around the city, because there's no place unless you go along on the sidewalk on the street. There's no pathway. But one of my concerns is the flooding along Ash Creek that's going to happen as we build more in that area. And how are those people going to connect to this Sunset Meadows green strip? There is no path coming from the, excuse me, from the proposed area to what's already established. I don't understand how you're envisioning, the city is envisioning all of this being put together. Plus, I also have a question about the, on the riparian area and in the stormwater area, that that's supposed to be part of a park. You know in Oregon that if it's a stormwater drainage area, it's going to be wet most of the year. How does that settle, how does that pass for a park place where if you're building all of these houses and you have children and young people, where can they play a softball game or a soccer game or just run around because it's all wet? We're not making plans for livability in our community, and we're having all of this growth without taking into consideration what we need to make it a viable community for the people who are living there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. I appreciate it. Martha Martinez? Good evening and welcome to city council.
Thank you. My name is Martha Martinez. I live at 1304 South Ninth Street on the Sunset Meadow Development. I came to support the pathway. I do have a background in public health, and I'm part of also that community. So my concerns are that there's not appropriate pathways being constructed on Brandy Meadows or the other developments that connect the rest of the community with the parks or any recreational activities. And research has shown that providing those adequate pathways and that access to parks and, like I said, recreation activities, whether it's biking or anything like that, shows a health improvement, whether it's physical, emotional, or mental health. And one example of that is Benton County. They have created great opportunities along their communities to strive, and they have, they have been one of the healthiest county in the state for many, many years. And I would like to see that within my community, to have that access of pathways to be able to safely be walking around. I still do. I've met a lot of my neighbors that way. But it's not safe having to walk on the street or seeing kids play on the road because there's not that extension of the pathways to the rest of the development. One other comment with the gentleman that mentioned the only road of exit from those new developments, I totally agree. I think we'd need another access point of entering our neighborhood, because with the new development coming, I feel like it's going to get more packed, and it's going to be, make it difficult for us to have to commute to work and back. So those were my only two concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Are there others who have not spoken who wish to speak? Okay. So we're going to go to the next part, is the city staff summary in response to public testimony. Followed by the applicant rebuttal.
While Fred's getting organized, I have just one response on, from my perspective with regard to the testimony received. I heard a plea for additional notice pertaining to, of anticipated or proposed subdivisions. And I just want to let you know that currently notices sent per your code, which requires notice to property owners within 250 feet, which is already 150 feet in excess of what's required by statute, which is only 100 feet. So were the council interested in providing even more notice, you would start a legislative amendment process to your code for consideration of the pros and cons of expanding that even further.
Thank you. Appreciate that. For those of you who don't know, that is our city attorney who was speaking. To you, sir.
Thank you. Can you pull up that PowerPoint one more time? So I heard a lot of, I heard a lot of issues there. I'm going to try and capture them all. If I don't --
I'm sure someone will ask.
Someone will, someone asks. So yes, the first thing that we heard was from Mr. Hill. Mr. Hill is exactly right. I mean, the Southwest Independence Plan has been adopted into our comprehensive plan. It's absolutely right. That's part of why we're evaluating the development in terms of the Southwest Independence Concept Plan. As I would argue, as I argued the first public hearing for this, this development fits really well within that plan. It achieves a number of the goals anticipated. The one key issue that there might be questioned about is what is, what to do with this trail on the east side of, of, of the Brandy Meadows, of the east side of the plan? I'll say, Phase 1 of Brandy Meadows went in without the trail. So trying to reconstruct the trail now or trying to put in the trail now is exceedingly difficult. Also, again, with the trail shown later through Sunset Meadows on a plan three years later, I would argue that it achieves what, what that Southwest Independence Plan was looking for. Now, the second thing, so yes, we have evaluated this development in terms of the Southwest Independence Concept Plan, absolutely. The second thing was about the 25-foot setback. And you will note in my staff report, I put that this is a relevant criterion. Part of the reason that it's a relevant criterion is because it applies to future development of the site. Right here, you can see that, yeah, that 25-foot is somewhere. There's a trail right up on top of that. Right here, you will see this is 25 feet. Even if you went from the top of that area throughout the vast majority of this, you are going to be outside of that 25 feet. That is part of why it's a relevant criterion. I will say, it was relevant to me because it seems clear to me that even if you are at the top of the bank, the vast majority of that, you are going to be outside of that 25 feet. I will say. So just by nature of the design of the lots, the vast majority of the development will be outside of that 25 feet. Does that make sense? By nature of the design of the lots, even if, I'm just going based on this top contour right here, which is the maximum top of the bank that you could consider. I mean, that you can see on the contour thing. I bring that up because just based on the design of the lots, you're probably going to achieve that 25 feet. That's why I included it as a relevant criterion. However, the criterion is not relevant in that it applies to development. So this will be evaluated at the time of future building permits, if that makes sense. Future building permits are going to need to be 25 feet away, but again, with the lot depth, you're still coming out further this way, if that makes sense, right? Because it's going to be to fence, to a house, to whatever. The trail will fall somewhere in there, and yes, we will double check that that's 25 feet.
So if I can just paraphrase, what I think I'm hearing you say is that were this relevant criteria to this subdivision application, it would be met even if you measured from the highest point?
Right.
In accordance with the testimony received tonight. But in fact, it actually isn't relevant criteria for the subdivision. But in fact, it actually isn't relevant criteria for the subdivision. It's relevant criteria for development. And it will actually be applied when the building permits are coming in? Is that something that the Planning Commission will be looking at? Is there another land use process associated with that?
There's no land use process. That's a staff consideration at the time of building permit, absolutely.
Okay. So essentially, it's looked at twice.
Right. If that makes sense. The one area that there might be a question is this. This is the four lot apartment lot right here. This is a very big lot, so I imagine that this apartment is going to be sitting there. I mean, we'll look at it at the time of development. But I mean, it's relevant in that it's something to consider. It's not relevant in that we'll look at it at the time of building permit.
So it can be met?
It can be met, absolutely. Yes, it can be met.
One question at some point that I would want the council to discuss this evening is if it is ambiguous criteria, what standard do you, how do you want to interpret it? Do you want to provide any direction to staff on how to interpret it? Do you want to measure from that high bank area or from the original channel? Is that, I think that's a fair question for the council tonight that we might want to incorporate into findings.
Is there any general rule to, do they follow the OARs that they mentioned earlier?
Or... So if you can give us some guidance on how you would want it to be interpreted, I think our advice tonight is going to be, please, tell us how you want to decide which way you want to go. Do you want to support the appellant or do you want to support the applicant? And then we can craft findings on this point more specifically.
I was hearing two different measurements for where the top of the water comes. One that was in the Brandy Meadows and then one that was in the master plan for the parks. Is there actually a discrepancy between those two?
In terms of the height of the, no. I guess I don't understand your question. The confusion is right here. You can see the 25 feet shall begin at the top of the bank or at the high watermark, whichever is higher.
Okay.
So...
And that's where you measured it from the whichever is higher point?
Well, no. What I'm essentially saying is if you measured it from up here, I'm saying that the top of the bank and the high watermark are probably somewhere in here, right? If you measured it from up here, you're still probably going to hit that 25 feet. The only place where it's going to be...
It's that one little corner.
It's that one little corner.
But the code says, top of the watermark or the bank, whichever is higher.
Whichever is higher.
So it's going to be the highest point of those two.
So it would have to be measured from the bank.
But it's ambiguous what you mean by high watermark.
Yeah, because I would actually argue that this is the bank right here. This is not the bank. This is the bank.
Except it gives two descriptions, the bank or the high watermark, whichever is higher.
Right. Right. Exactly.
And I think it seems to me we should go with whatever the code says and if that says the point that's higher. And I understand you're saying that that means that even if we measure it from the very top of the ridge there, that you'll still manage the 25-foot setback, but that would be handled within building permits rather than on the map that we're looking at.
Right. We definitely, that's how we handle, this is called a greenway, I think it's called a greenway setback or something like that. That's how we handle it now.
Okay. And if I can just add, I think Kerry's point is relevant here too because if we don't have a definition of what that high watermark is, it's going to be very difficult for us to interpret that when we get to issuing those building permits. So that's why we have the suggestion is to have some sort of criteria that you guys discussed that we can make a finding on so that we can interpret that when we get to that point.
Sounds like a good plan. Continue with your staff response to the public testimony, please.
Perfect. Another one was the discussion of parks and trails and as part of a plat dedication. Right now, you remember the last time I was here and we were talking about the annexation. I threw up a diagram that said project in the bottom right-hand corner. And I said, everybody hears about project and they don't realize the various steps that you have to go through. This project too is going to have to go through steps to actually get to construction. One of those steps is you go through a preliminary plat approval process. That's sort of what we're doing right now. You submit engineering to demonstrate how that is going to work on the ground and then you record a final plat. The lots are not created until a final plat is recorded.
Fred, who approves all those? Who is going to review all that and bring it to council?
So that is what your city engineer, that's what people like Kai Cotum do, that review the engineering. And then the final plat is reviewed by us internally to make sure that it's consistent with this preliminary plat. Now, one of the conditions says specifically, you have to dedicate this land. You have to dedicate this land for parks and a trail.
Is that one of the 18 items?
That's one of the 20, 21 conditions.
21.
And it's condition number 20. Mr. Hill noted it and he said that it's not within the future street plan. I said, the trail along the south fork of Ash Creek shown on the future street plan shall be completed prior to the final plat approval for Phase 4 of the subdivision. This is the future street plan. So this is the document that that's referring to.
But there's an assumption we can see it up here.
Yeah.
I personally can. It's a white piece of paper.
Yeah. And you can see too that it's got the trail on the west side. That was used in creation of this image right here. You can see the trail. The orange is just tracing the trail.
Just a quick question. So before approval of the plats and final building permits, no dirt is moved, nothing gets, no banks are disturbed or anything like that?
Right. So, no, that's not right. But you have to submit engineering and have the engineering approved prior to that point. At that point is when a lot of this discussion about how exactly the trail is going to sit, how the stormwater facility is going to look, the degree to which that can incorporate parkland, all of that stuff will occur at that engineering review stage, right? Is that clear? All right. Mr. Clark in his presentation mentioned 146 acres and a two-mile trail. That is for the entire southwest, or that's the entire southwest area east of the south fork of Ash Creek that he included in that calculation. If he, I appreciate him bringing this up. If he's got a concern about that, if we want more trails than that, that's more than a discussion here. That's a legislative consideration about actually enhancing the number of trails in the southwest area. The southwest plan itself shows exactly, I'm sorry, I can't remember what's that, exactly the trail network that he traced. That trail network that he traced was something like this. And so if he's got concerns about it, we should change the southwest area. Now, we heard some concerns about transportation access, another access point. We heard concerns about bike lanes, pathways, and other access out, all of that stuff. Those are not subject, those were not raised in this appeal. So we would encourage you not to consider those right now. The Planning Commission definitely considered those things. You will note some of their conditions related to a per acre basis to fund, a payment on a per acre basis to help fund the Chestnut Street Bridge, to provide another access out. You will also note conditions related to G Street that would attempt to help people get out of that neighborhood on a short-term basis. One other thing, then I think I'm done. We heard about stormwater in parks and that that doesn't work because we're in Oregon. In fact, there's great examples nearby. There's parks in Salem that do exactly that. Also, one that we're all very familiar with, Madrona Park over in Monmouth is exactly that. It includes stormwater and when it's dry in the summer, when people like to be out using recreational facilities, you can go out and use that facility. So that's sort of the concept here, a similar sort of approach where you can, and it's exactly what's sought in the southwest area plan. So, does it achieve that? Yes. Now, I'll just say, it's really important, and this, I'll end with this. It's really important when we look at this stuff to distinguish between the different roles of legislative and quasi-judicial. Sitting as judges, we have to, and reviewing project applications, we have to look at the criteria that we have. The criteria that we have are pretty clear. And my review of it, I would argue that yes, this project meets those criteria. Looking at some of these other concerns though, I think if the council desires, we can consider these as legislative items. If we desire more trails in the southwest area, that's something that we could potentially pursue through legislative matters like rebooking at the southwest area plan. Does this actually achieve what we want out in the area? But that is not a question for this public hearing right now. So are there any last questions?
Questions for the speaker? Please do.
Well, based on what you just said.
Yeah.
As that the whole of the trail system is not necessarily under consideration for this, I would still like to ask if the city can produce an easy overview of where all these trails will connect and where they will go. Because for my part, I find it hard to understand this compared with the other, the map where it had the trail going up along the creek and then some lines over here that said, here's part of the trail and here's part of the trail. I don't have a good concept of how they all are intended to connect.
Right. What I would argue is since this is the more recent document, that this is the park and open space trail network that we're pursuing right now. And I think that this is valuable because whereas the southwest area plan looked at a limited geography, this pulled back and it considered citywide and looked at how can we connect some of these places throughout the city? And it was really, so anyways, I think that this is, this is an important document, especially in regards to that southwest.
Okay. I'd sure like to see a copy that my eyes are capable of reading.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see. Yeah, okay.
Additional questions for the speaker at this point? That does not preclude us from speaking to him later on. So this is not the only time. You're not done, Fred.
No, just a quick point of clarification.
Sure, go ahead.
So having done my time on the Planning Commission for a number of years, I just want to clarify that tonight, we're restricting our decision-making to Point 2, trail easements, Point 3, riparian zone easements, and Point 4, the open space network and the associated ordinances that go with that.
We would definitely encourage you to do that, yes.
But those are the three items that we're really restricted to considering this evening.
Yeah.
As a matter on the appeal.
Would you like to expand upon that, please?
Just as a matter of fairness to the applicant, issues on appeal are allowed to be raised within that 12-day period after a notice of decision is issued. Those that you just identified were what was raised, taking out the one that the appellant recognizes was an error.
Right.
And so yes, that is why, as a matter of fairness, your consideration is limited to those matters that were raised initially.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I'm going to keep moving here. We have applicant rebuttal. Good evening again.
Harvey Cummings. Wow, okay. Well, we're all on the same page here. I think we're all trying to get to the same spot. This is not a one-time, come in, do the development, leave town, be gone, push it as close to the creek as we can get and run out the back door. We're going to be here for 10 to 20 years working on this 80-acre piece in the new MX Zone. It's nine to 12 units per acre, so there's going to be a development out there that requires us to have a minimum of nine units and a maximum of 12 units. So it requires some really good planning. And the parks are critical. The connectivity is critical, but we can't address connectivity that's outside of our property, other connectivity issues that have happened in the past. What we can do is do a good development here. We're, you know, we have a big lot there, so we're not really pushing against that creek. I can read the code again, but it's really clear. I don't see any ambiguity in here at all. It simply says, you know, it's either 25 feet at the top of bank or the high watermark, whichever is right. We send our surveyors out there to do a very detailed topographic survey from the creek all the way through. And then we'll put it on a profile and it gets real clear as to where the top of the bank is. And with this development and the 25-foot setback, we've structured this development so we're not even close to encroaching on that because the back of the property lines and the developments, we've got big enough lots that we're well out of it. If we put a 100-foot barrier in there, what that does to the overall project is it'll start to increase the density in the rest of this for us to meet the nine units per acre. So we could end up with, if we don't utilize the space smart, we'll end up in rowhouse city to meet that density and we don't want to do that. You know, we're trying to stay away from that trap. So yeah, we want to use as much land as we can. Now, I think that addresses that without getting into real detail, but after this approval, then we get down with the city engineer and get down in the bones of just where these topo lines are. We do our final designs and grades on everything. At that point, you know, we have to meet this criteria or we don't get approval for the next phase of this development. So it's critical from our behalf to make sure that we have room in there and that we're not working ourselves into a corner. As far as the parks, we could meet the parks, the parks requirement is a certain percentage of the land needs to be dedicated to parks. That's the requirement. We're meeting that requirement. What we don't want to do is piecemeal and take just the area that we're dealing with under these Phases 2, 3, and 4 and make one little park to meet that requirement and then go to the next one and do another little park. Those are called pocket parks. They're wonderfully useless. And what we're trying to do is something a little better here. So what we're trying to do is start to place all the park. As this develops out, we start up in the corner where the creek comes through is an awesome place for a larger park. So we're going to be putting, developing that park as we go and putting more and more park. That park will grow as we grow and at the end, we're going to end up with a large park by the creek with pedestrian connectivity to town and future higher-density stuff to the west of us. So, you know, I think it's a good plan. Also, as far as flooding... Also, as far as flooding, let's talk about that a little. There's some concern there. This project, the way the state rules are on stormwater control, which is very tight, the concept of impervious surfaces running more water to the creek and flooding it is not correct. The more we develop, the less the flooding problem becomes. We're required to retain the 100-year flood event, and that's what those detention ponds are for. And then that's discharged at a two-year intensity rate. So essentially, what's happening is, we're slowing down the water. We, when we get a flood event, we capture that water. We don't let it go to the creek. It's held and then let out really slowly. So our systems improve as we go. And, you know, the biggest, the biggest thing here is, I know everyone's concerned in the area, but I can't express how much we want the same thing, and it's really a great opportunity out there to, to do something really good. We have the background to come in here. We've been involved with the concept plan from the beginning, and we're going to be here for 10 to 20 years, and we want to walk away with something that is, you know, that we can look back on and say, wow, that is an awesome development. Look at the kids, look at them having fun. Wow, this system works. And we're in this, we're lucky enough to have one developer on this size of a piece with the foresight to come in and do this right. So, you know, I, I think you should approve it. Let us go on, let us work with the engineers. We're meeting all the requirements. I feel it's, it's pretty clear. See, the city set forth these requirements. We went through each one and worked hard to meet them. And, you know, we really want to do good thinking. That's all I can say.
Questions for the speaker?
I have a question. Where do your surveyors measure the top of, if you recall the picture of Ash Creek, do they measure the top of the, the bank as that small bank, you know, that's kind of in the middle?
No, no.
Or up, or up on the high bank?
No, I'm sure, we, we look at the high point. One little wiffle in there isn't going to have, when you look at the topo, you know, you'll get a, a view of just where the creek is. It's real obvious because it's so flat here. So you can see flat coming over, and then it drops down pretty good in there. It's fairly steep down off that. It's, it's obvious.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like this, but then, then it goes down like that.
It does.
Yeah, so it's, so it's more, or more up in this area?
It's, in this area out there, there's no ambiguity. It's real obvious.
Okay. I haven't, I haven't been to the creek at that point, so.
You know, this is what I was saying earlier, a small developer, or development that has a really confined area is going to try to push up against that, you know, and say, oh, we're, we're going to get every inch here, even if it's a bad development because it doesn't matter, we're leaving town and we just want to get every inch. We're not that. You know, there's no reason for us to mess around with 10 or 20 feet. If it's up high, we're taking the high point because, you know, we'll be here when it's flooding, when everything's going on. We're not, we're not going anywhere, so we're doing it right. It's definitely, we're definitely there, and it is the top of the bank. I was looking at it when he was saying that, and I'm going, no, not that spot. You can see the top of the bank clearly in that same picture, up above.
Yeah. Are there addition, I didn't mean to cut you off, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Are there additional questions of the speaker? Okay.
I have one question.
Please do.
If I may. So if you're measuring already for your development in your, in your head and your plans, would you accept a condition of approval that would say the 25 feet is measured from that high mark, top of the bank, in order to resolve this issue and be able to allow the?
Well...
And the reason that I'm...
That high spot is, okay, here's my answer to that. I think that's super, super ambiguous for this situation. Being an engineer and knowing what I have to go through and, and what we have to do dealing with the city engineer on this, you know, to say that point on that drawing up there just seems so ambiguous compared to really sitting down with the data, the engineering data that's in the computer and doing it. The top of a bank in the engineering world is pretty common. I mean, we're, we're looking at it a lot of the time. So, to be honest with you, I think it's very ambiguous and not necessary.
So the criteria that we're looking at says there'll be no development within the required setbacks, and the setback is 25 feet from the top of the bank or the high watermark. And I'm thinking that we can resolve this matter to the benefit of the opponents as well as the applicant and allow the matter to move forward if we include a condition of, a condition of approval, which is that you will meet this criteria, that your development will meet this criteria.
I'm okay with that, yes.
And, and then that allows, at the time the building permits are being issued, everybody knows it has to be measured from wherever the engineers say this is the high watermark and they've identified it, and we're going to move 25 feet back.
I think that's what this is saying.
That's exactly what this is saying, and I just...
Yeah, that's the same code here.
Yep. Yep. I just want to repeat the code in a condition of approval to make sure that it carries forward, and then everybody can be assured that's how the building permits will be issued.
I'm going to go.
Okay.
I was, I was going to say, have we decided what high watermark is? Because we've been talked about the ordinary mark, which is annually, and you mentioned the two-year watermark.
This is a tough forum to really, to make a definitive decision. That's why we have engineers.
Right, okay.
That's why you hire a city engineer to represent the city on your behalf.
They're, they're looking for guidance. My preference would be whatever's consistent within, within like the valley, pretty much, among other cities.
I'm not, I'm not cutting off your, I want to keep, keep your idea. Let's, let's, let the gentleman know, does he have, do we have any additional questions for him at this time?
I just think that it'd be nice to hear from the city engineer, if that's...
We, we can, we can look at that as we go forward after, because we can, once the speakers are speaking, we'll close the hearing, and then council can ask staff questions about all sorts of things, and we can, there's a lot of flexibility, what we can do by asking questions to staff.
Unless there's additional evidence that we want to put in, that staff wants to put in. So if, if there is any expert testimony that we have on the staff side from Public Works Director, that, this would be a good time before we close the hearing to hear that.
Okay.
But, but if, if there's nothing new to add, then we can just answer questions.
Nothing new, okay. All right. Trying to get, do this correctly. Okay, so I don't see anybody wanting to ask any question, further questions. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Okay, so here's, there being no further testimony for the council, now I'll close the hearing at 8:33. Okay, now here's what we, here's what the next steps are.
I just want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Eric.
Please do.
Are you closing the hearing and the record?
It doesn't say in my script whether I'm closing the hearing and the record or not.
If we aren't going to take any more evidence on any matter that's in front of you, then I recommend closing the hearing and the record.
Is any objection to closing the hearing and the record? I think that's what you're recommending?
That it, yeah.
Okay, so, so be it. So here we go. We have, we have discussion by council. Only questions asked of staff are allowed after this hearing closes, and the council can determine whether to make a decision immediately or at a later date. And the applicant has up to seven days after the close of the record, did I just get, did I just step on myself here, to provide final legal arguments.
Since we just closed it and they didn't request for it to be, to remain open, it's just closed.
So I'm going to look at them and say, I want to make sure I didn't unfairly close the record here. Did you have other things that you wanted to add?
No, for goodness sake.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to make sure that we're all upfront. So here, counsel, we can, we can talk to staff, we can discuss this. We, do we want to do it tonight? Do you want to look at additional material? What would you like to do?
I guess I'll, I'll just start, but I, I wanted to make a comment about really the trail system and everything. Looking at, shoot, there's too many figures. Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at Figure F, and it, and it seems like Phases 2, 3, and 4 don't impact much of what we call the, the trail system. It's just that one little corner, which we are, you know, hoping we'll make sure that there's a 25-foot setback. I'm fine with saying that, that we've basically moved that north-south trail system over to Sunset Meadows. One thing, which is not part of this thing, is I'd like to see a, a better representation of exactly where that trail's going to be, because it kind of looks like, as, as one of the people mentioned, it looks like it's just kind of cut off. So maybe a little clarification of how that trail's going to be completed.
I agree.
Is that, is that the same thing that, that counsel...
Yes.
It's, yeah, the north-south trail.
Kind of a visual of how this all comes together.
Yeah. I mean, it's fine that we moved it over 400 feet into Sunset Meadows, that's okay, but, but I, it, it almost looks like, you know, are we really doing this or not? So, I would like to see that.
And I just, I want to see something that demonstrates that the intent for the trail is going to be fulfilled. The intent for a connective trail will be fulfilled.
Yes. But that doesn't impact this.
Right, that's a separate, so we can only rule on, as a judge, we can only rule on the criteria that are in front of us, and then, as was suggested, we can, we can go back and look at other, all the, all the other mix of other issues that can go there.
I'd like some more time to go through Dr. Clark's presentation. We didn't get to see the whole presentation. I'd like to have some time to pour over that.
Anybody have any objection to that?
Not at all.
Okay. So what, please?
Or we do that, I would want to know when the 120-day rule expires and whether the applicant would be willing to accommodate council's desire to review additional evidence, the evidence and the record, because we have no other meeting this month.
Right.
Do you know what that date is?
We were past it.
Wasn't it extended, though?
We extended it, but I don't know.
To today?
To today?
We don't mind extending it more, give it more time.
Yeah, I'll just mention that our next regularly scheduled council meeting is until January 14th, I believe, so. Is that okay with everybody? I, I would hate to have to, I know some people would like to take a look at them. We got a lot of material today.
Yeah. And I, but I'd like to have it be a hard stop on that January meeting, if at all possible.
And that, and that does give everybody time?
Does that feel, does that feel like it gives, I'm, I'm not, I'm talking about them probably more than the council. Yeah. I, I don't think there's going to be a lot of building in Christmas.
Get a jump on it? No.
So what we need is an affirmation by the applicant to a date certain, and ultimately we'll want it in writing.
My name's Harvey Cummings. What was the date you were wanting to look at this again?
Well, our next regularly scheduled council meeting is January 14th, I believe.
January 14th, okay. We're okay with extending this to January 14th.
Can you say to the 15th, just so we could get it signed, what that date?
Fourteenth and a half.
Good, good negotiating.
Fifteenth, January 15th. It's okay with the applicant.
Okay? So...
Thank you.
What I think I'm hearing is that we don't need to do anything else at this point. Staff will get you the appropriate documents to take a look at with the, and so we can be addressing the criteria from which we can make decisions, because that's how, you know, because if anybody above us has to look at that, those are the criteria that we're going to be measured on.
And, and while staff is getting information out of kindness, could they provide us with a picture of the trail?
I'm looking at staff and asking if that is a reasonable request.
What, what picture?
Not, not a picture. I'd just like a, some kind of depiction of where the trail will go and how it will all connect.
And I'm going to ask our attorney, could you review just briefly, I want to make sure that we, that I understand, the, we're doing, we have to look at the criteria. You started, you said that earlier, and I'd like you to just kind of review that. We have to stick to only the criteria that we're evaluating.
Thanks, yes. So as you're reviewing the evidence that came in this evening, I believe it was counselor, I cannot see who it was.
Martin Willis.
Who identified the, the criteria and the issues that you're really going to be examining. So to the extent the evidence pertains to those issues that were raised by the original appeal, that's what is considered relevant.
And those are the only things that we can address in this, in the, in this appeal? Is that correct? And then everything else would have to be in a different, in a different form, in a different situation? Is that correct?
The way that, yes. Thank you for that summary. And the way that I believe we'll modify the draft order and findings for you will be to identify that testimony and that is not relevant to applicable criteria. So, so the findings that you'll see on January 14th will identify for you, here's what we think, what pertained to applicable criteria, here's what we think didn't, but maybe also show you how it's been addressed.
So even, so even if we like some of, these are a number of things that were said here, there was lots and lots of value. So we may not be able to address it in this applicant, in this appeal, but we could still address some of those heartfelt and relevant concerns in a, in a different, different place, right?
After the essential decision is made.
Right. I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was abundantly clear. Clear to me, too. Please, counsel.
And, and in that same spirit, and it's, we heard several things that were said out here about concern for arteries in the subdivision and ingress, egress, access, escape, et cetera. Where would you recommend that these folks go to have that discussion? Would that be Traffic Safety Commission?
You know, actually, I'm glad to ask that question, because I was kind of referring to that, kind of a little bit of an advertisement, so to speak. We just actually heard back today that the Department of Justice has released our transportation system plan update to go to the Department of Transportation to do the intergovernmental agreement with us. So very shortly, we're actually going to be kicking off a project to talk about all of those issues, including trail connectivity and pathways, bikeways, pedestrian ways, roadway connectivity, and all those different things. That will be a very public process, and I heard a lot of great testimony, and I would love it if everybody would participate. We will advertise it. It'll be on social media, it'll be on our website, the news will be out there. We'll, we'll push out as we can.
Newsletter.
Water bill.
Newsletter, it'll be in our water bill.
So we're supposed to do this, like, how would you put it in the comments?
Well, again, social media, it'll be on our, in, in the handouts as you get to the, the paper, people will talk about it. We'll do our best to, to let people know. We can't send a, a letter to everybody in the community, but that is the opportunity for you really to flush a lot of these issues out, to have positive impact and positive comments on that, because that transportation system plan takes into all those modes of, of activity. A lot of times, we hear a lot about traffic, and we don't hear a lot about pedestrian ways and bike ways, so the more participation we get, the better plan that that gets to be. So that's, that's a great opportunity for people to engage in this.
And I want to build on that. Council is aware of issues related to traffic, getting people around in lots of different ways, and so we have been diligent in working to get the funding from ODOT to do a comprehensive, integrated transportation plan. And I'm, I didn't know that they just released the funds today, so thank you for sharing that, because that will allow, because as was pointed out, all these parts have to fit together, and it's, it's really important for our future. Is that okay?
I'd also like to just ask staff if we can get a breakdown of what's actually going on in the planning commission. It seems like this is the second time in recent months that we've heard, well, yeah, maybe it shouldn't have got, like, past planning commission, but we'll deal with it when we issue building permits. And I'm struggling with that comment. So if we could get just a breakdown of what's going on there and how this is happening, that would be great.
Well, normally, that report, in, in staff defense, that report would have happened at the last meeting, because I am your planning commission liaison. I was out ill at the last meeting, so you did not get that report. Minutes are always available, and I'm always happy to chat, just so you know.
Yes, I'm just struggling that it, it's happened twice in the last couple of weeks.
And if I made it sound like something inappropriately came out of the planning commission, that is not my intent at all. I actually think that the planning commission is an incredible, an incredible body. When they heard the first public hearing, there was more people in this room, and they, they listened, they did a very good job with it. So if I made it sound like, for some reason, the planning commission has fallen in any way short, I totally did not...
I think, I think I'm just, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus or anything, I'm just confused, because I heard the com- confused because I heard the comment tonight, well, we'll deal with that when we issue building permits. And I know when we did the annexation, we had some questions at some things, and that was the same answer. So I just am not sure why we're not getting that before it's going to building permits because once it goes to building permits, it's completely out of counsel's hands.
I have similar concerns. We've placed, we've nominated a few people to be on the planning commission recently since August. I think we've appointed two people, and I know there's been a quorum issue sometimes that the planning commission has dealt with. And again, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus either, but we made a decision tonight to put a wine and tourism expert on the planning commission versus somebody with land use and transportation experience. That's a concern for me. I want the best people possible on the planning commission. Between the planning commission and the budget committee, those are the people we rely on to tell us what's going on and to make recommendations to us. So it's really important that good people be on those commissions.
Yeah, and to address your comment, Counsel Renssens, I think it's a better process and sometimes it's a challenge to identify what step in the processing has happened. This is one where, yes, the decision is made, you know, by the billing official, but the code criteria is in here, and that's why you're addressing it. So we will try to make sure that we identify different discrete components in the process as well as we can, so it's not a surprise.
Right, so what I'd like to do is suggest we do a recess because we have more business to do. Can we take a 10-minute one? Is that okay with everybody?
Please.
We're in recess till almost 9:00. Thank you. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. All righty. We have the next item, recycled water use facility easement purchase. Mr. Cotum. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Mayor, counsel. I am back here to talk to you about the recycled water use facility project. The staff has requested the authority to negotiate and purchase easements for the recycled water use pipeline. The construction of the pipeline for this project has been previously approved by counsel. Public easements are a part of the pipeline project and are included in the fiscal year budget. Counsel adopted a loan resolution in November of 2017 for projects in the 2015 facilities plan. On August 13th of 2019, counsel subsequently amended the 2017 resolution to increase the amount of the obligation. The recycled water use facility project is included in the loan obligation plan and the 2019-20 capital improvement plan. These easements required are a portion of the recycled water use facility pipeline project and are included in the 19 and 20 adopted budget. The city is committed to staying compliant with state regulations and continue to support growth inside city limits. The city does not own all of the property between the wastewater treatment facility and the recycled water use irrigation field. Must obtain these easements through impacted properties. The city tasked right-of-way associates of Beaverton, Oregon, to complete appraisals for the easements and enter negotiations for those easements. Included in the loan for the recycled water use was a budget of $180,450 for 180, $180,450 for procurement of the easements. Easement purchases will become obligations included in the loan package after they are obtained. So I've been back several times about this project, and this is in the next phase. We have completed Phase 1, that was a pipeline project, so we came to you for easements for that, and construction funds. We've completed that project, we're moving on to Phase 2, and this is the easements for that project. And that runs north from the lagoon facility out to the completed project, past the airport.
And this was, this is in the budget, it's in the water rate, it's already in the sewer rate structure, and all we're doing is authorizing the plans that have already been outlined in the past, is that correct?
We have been planning this project since 2015.
Right, it's already been, all the finances have been figured out, and we're just doing the authorization.
Correct.
Additional questions? Additional questions? This is an action item.
I move to authorize staff to negotiate and execute agreements to purchase public easements identified for the RWUV Pipeline and Lift Station in a total amount not to exceed $180,450.
Second.
Motion, second, is there discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney.
We're moving on to the next item, the parking in city parking lots. Chief Mason, good evening.
Good evening. It's a full house tonight, but it's not now. So I am here to discuss proposed change to existing ordinance regarding parking. We currently lack regulations that govern the use of publicly owned or publicly operated parking lots. As discussed in the council memorandum that's in your packets, this proposed change would create the inclusion of publicly owned or publicly operated parking lots into our existing code. Additionally, it would amend current code and require vehicles to park within marked lines or stalls when they're marked, and it would restrict overnight parking, allowing for exemption of city-owned vehicles or by the city manager or designee authorization, would be the only time people would be able to overnight park. While these proposed changes were being reviewed by our legal counsel, it was discovered that House Bill 2471 was passed by this last legislative session, takes effect on January 1st, 2020, and it requires that we extend the length of time parking citation recipients have to pay their parking fines before that fine could be increased. Our code currently calls for an increase after five days of non-payment, and the proposed change is to give people 30 days before their fine would increase, and that's so that we would be compliant with that new requirement. Questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Please.
I had a resident approach me about some of the parking that's on Osprey Lane or to the west of Osprey Lane, behind the buildings on Main Street, the Masonic Lodge, et cetera, et cetera. There is a dumpster in one of the parking spaces down there. Would that be something that is disallowed under this?
That's a good question. I should, and let me expand just a little bit more. I contacted the two parties that were subject to the agreement because the council entered, well, the city at least, entered into an agreement to make that parking lot what it is now with the, well, the Elks, and then the other confused me, actually. It wasn't the Masons, it was the, I called your husband, help me out.
Yeah, the Masons, yes.
Huh?
The Masons.
Hmm? No, Lions.
Oh, the Lions.
Lions, it says Lions on the agreement, that's why I was confused.
Huh.
But yes, so I did call them.
It's Lions Lodge.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
See, that's why I was confused. I did call them, and I had a few questions that I told the Elks representative, Kim Corless, that I would present to you because she wasn't going to be here tonight. So she did approach the Elks with this proposed language, and their questions were, would they still be able to have their RVs parked in the parking lot? Was there a method for someone that had drank too much to leave their vehicle and not get penalized? And she asked about the dumpster, and I told her that that was really something that I think was already outlined in the parking agreement, and I sent her a copy of the parking agreement, but told her really that was a city manager decision. And lastly, she asked about a utility trailer that they occasionally park there for a few days that they use to do public presentations.
Which is there right now, yes.
Yeah, and she said generally it has a home that isn't there, but they bring it in, sometimes it's there for 20 days.
It's the drug awareness trailer that they brought down from one of the other lodges.
I told her again, that was a city manager decision.
Right. Well, and in all fairness, I was at the board meeting where this was discussed last night, and I did point out the section, and I don't have it highlighted with me, in the parking ordinance that does mention no overnight parking, with the exception of those designated by the city manager or his or her designee. So that was pointed out to them, they're aware of that.
Did I get the rest of the questions okay?
Yeah.
All right, good.
For any of the things we do where we bring in a bunch of trucks and stuff for kids to climb on, is the process for them to have to go through this going to be any different with these changes? They're already getting approval, you know, like where you climb on the trucks.
You're talking like the Touch a Truck event?
Yeah.
So that parking lot would be actually part of the park, River View Park, and that is reservable as part of our parks process. So that's a city event at this point anyway.
It is, yeah.
But that, someone could still reserve the parking lot and utilize it that way.
Like the car show type stuff?
Yeah, exactly, because there are car shows and other types of events like that.
Okay.
So Chief, when we talked about the RVs in the back of the Elks Club when we had the work session, those are Elks members' RVs that they're parking back there?
The Elks has traditionally allowed other Elks, I shouldn't say only exclusively, but that's my understanding, is that it's Elks from out of town to overnight park, and it is something that the lodge does in other locations.
Gotcha, okay.
Throughout the state.
Yeah, some lodges actually have full-on RV parks.
I thought it was maybe more of a homeless situation, that they were finding an empty parking lot.
No, 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 these are actually out-of-town Elks and traditionally, like New Year's Eve, if they come for our party, then they have been allowed to. And I thought that was resolved by they would be required to come to the city and get a permit? Or city manager position, or permission, as it was stated. Because I know we, the RV thing has come up before.
Previously, that's because we did not have any code that addressed that, we did have them come in because we have other code that applies to streets and other places in the city, and so we had them come and apply. And then once they went past the period that they could apply for, then they left. This would change that, though, in this particular case, because we're not allowing overnight parking, however, we are giving the, or the city manager, whoever is here, the authority to make decisions.
To make exceptions.
To make, so that, you know, people are not driving home drunk, because that's something clearly we don't want to do.
Now, do you want the call at 1:30 in the morning saying, Mr. Pesmire, can John Doe stay the night?
People have a process in place before 1:30 in the morning.
I think true is or designee.
Well, but legitimately, I mean, how does that get handled? Or do you guys not cruise through at 6:00 AM and cite whoever's there?
So we have still some internal decisions to make on that, but one of the ideas we have is to issue a couple of placards to the Elks Club to say, hey, give this out. It would be dated, so it would only be good for a limited amount of time.
Right.
So that that way, we want the vehicle left rather than someone that shouldn't be driving.
Yeah, the conversation that you and I had previously had, yeah.
But the overnight parking of RVs, really, I think our idea is not to allow that. That's how I feel.
Okay.
Counsel Morgan.
When we had the work session a while ago, and we were talking about overnight homeless, appeared to be homeless parking, that was not confused for Elks parking overnight, was it? That was a different situation.
So there are people living in RVs in our community that move from parking lot to parking lot currently. The photo I had was someone that was Elks affiliated, that the Elks also wanted out of there. They didn't want them staying, and it became a struggle to get rid of those people.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Additional questions for the staff? If not, this is a ordinance, if somebody would like to do the honors.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-05 in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
In ordinance admitting identified sections of Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 32, traffic of vehicles, Article 6, stopping, standing, and parking, and declaring an effective date.
Second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-05 for the second time by title only.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion passes.
In ordinance admitting identified sections of Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 32, traffic of vehicles, Article 6, stopping, standing, and parking, and declaring an effective date.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt a proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2019-05.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, I think we're all okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Order is pending, number 1574.
Without objection, what we're going to do is we're going to adjourn this meeting and go to the Urban Renewal Agency. Someone say adjourn?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And now I'll call to order the Urban Renewal Agency. Please let the record show that everybody is here and present. In front of you, you have the June 11th, 2019 minutes. Do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. Pesmire, I think you and Mr. Irvine have the, have this.
Thank you, Mayor, and in consideration of the time of the evening, I'm going to kind of get shorter a little bit of what I wanted to talk about, but I definitely do want to kind of just give a little bit of background to some of you who may not have had to deal with urban renewal for a while or are new to urban renewal in general. You may have noticed that the mayor closed a meeting and opened up a new meeting, and that is because you have multiple hats that you wear. Some cities are more formal than I think Independence is. I know when I was in Sherwood, we would actually call the different councilors, board members, and the mayor would be the chair and not the mayor anymore. But certainly, we don't need to be that formal. But I do want to make sure that you guys do understand that this is a different legal entity that we're talking about. This is not the same legal entity as a city council, and the goals and objectives of the Urban Renewal Agency are significantly different than what you normally see on a day-to-day basis. So I kind of wanted to talk about that just a little bit, and just give you some general terms and things to consider, and then Sean's going to actually put some, you know, as Sean does, colorful pictures and make an exciting presentation to kind of show you some of those dry, boring things that I'm going to talk about into pictures and action. So just a little bit of background, the Urban Renewal Agency was founded in September 21st, 2001. It was based on guidelines from the Urban Renewal Agency Advisory Committee. There were a lot of urban renewal agencies that were founded around this particular period of time. The Urban Renewal Agency was put in place with an overarching goal to essentially remove blight. That was kind of the overarching goal. If you take a look at what the law says, the losses that urban renewal agencies are there to remove blight. And the definition of blight is nowhere in the state code, and some cities have been pretty creative on defining what the term blight means. I was going to give you some examples, but I think I'll just pass on that. It's also to implement the Concertant Comprehensive Plan inside the Urban Renewal Agency. What you have in Independence is really what urban renewal agencies were thought about when the law was created. It's not significantly creative, it is really there to do those projects to remove blight that quite frankly, the general fund just can't do. And so urban renewal agencies are based on tax increment financing, which I'll talk about later, and a specific set of goals or things that they're trying to do, which are really not something that city governments typically take on. Some of the specific local goals were to diversify the economic base and family wage jobs within the district, maintain effective, efficient, and safe traffic systems for vehicular and pedestrian users, improve and retain existing businesses, and improve attractive visual amenities for customers and community members throughout the district. So removal of blight, these were the primary goals that were identified at that point in time. There are also a list of projects that were somewhat identified to do as all urban renewal districts. It's hard to look out 20 years and figure out exactly what those projects are, but one of the things that urban renewal agencies do hunt is they put some cost estimates to what they want to try to accomplish. They also then inflate the costs of that project over that 20-year timeframe so that you're starting out with the base amount. They look at inflation and other things that are going to happen in that period of time to come up with the maximum amount of money that can be spent from the urban renewal district before they hit the cap. from the Urban Renewal District before they hit the cap, what they call a maximum indebtedness. So for Independence, the maximum indebtedness is $17,948,950. This was last evaluated when the plan was updated in 2016. We currently are working on a project to take that information and other information and find out exactly where we are at. We know we're getting close to that number. We don't know how much we have left in that cap, but that's something that we will find out before the end of the year. So, it's important to probably note that the state legislature put into effect a change to the law a number of years ago, I would say it was maybe almost 10 years ago now, because Urban Renewal Agencies that were put in place in 2001 hit just as there were really explosive increases in construction costs. And so every Urban Renewal Agency had a plan of a certain number of things they wanted to accomplish, and they found out pretty quickly that they were going to have to cut their expectations short because the, because the cost to construct projects accelerated much quicker than was anticipated. So they allowed a, the ability to increase your Urban Renewal by 20%, but then it gives you factors for inflation. So it roughly ends up to be about a 25% increase that you could increase your maximum indebtedness. Independence has not taken advantage of that for a lot of reasons. One is, as you know, we are still not collecting as much into the Urban Renewal Agency as our debt is. So clearly, until that day comes, which we're hoping will be in the near future, and we do believe it will be in the near future, there wouldn't be any reason to do that, and I certainly wouldn't suggest that there would be any reason to do that. And there was a really good list of projects that just absolutely needed to be accomplished, and that's what you all agreed you wanted to do, so. Talk about tax increment financing a little bit. This can be a long conversation, matter of fact, all these conversations that I'm talking about can be rather long. But tax increment financing is the way Urban Renewal Agencies are able to fund projects. And in Independence, there is what is called the frozen base. So essentially, you take the limits of the Urban Renewal Agency, the county calculates what the assessed value is of all the properties within that boundary as of 2001, and they set what they call the frozen base. So when they did that analysis, the total value of all the property, or the assessed value was $33,349,131. So they set that as a frozen base. And so for, for all of the taxes that are collected up to that amount, nothing changes. So essentially, when the tax bill goes out in 2010, they tax at that $33 million number. That money gets distributed to all the different taxing agencies, whether it be the city, or the school district, or the fire district, or the elementary college, or whichever, I guess, they get exactly the same amount. But anything over that $33 million, because as we know, assessed values rise over time, is distributed 100% to the Urban Renewal Agency, and the other taxing agencies forego that revenue. So, one thing you're going to ask me right now, well, what happens to the school district? Because that's the one question that everybody goes, well, is the school district losing money on that? That actually isn't the way school districts work, because the money that the tax assessor does, guess what, the school district actually goes to the state. And the state has stated that they're going to replace that money to make sure that the schools remain whole. That is a whole complicated process, once you get to the state, how they allocate monies to the school districts and everything else. And some school districts have actually asked for some Urban Renewal Districts not to close down because they actually had an advantage because of the way the state rules are funded. Some actually want you to close it down because there's a little bit of a disadvantage. But generally, they still get the same amount of money the school districts do. The fire district doesn't, though. I mean, they, that additional value is actually coming to the city to do these projects and pay off the projects. So, for example, in 2016, the excess value was $30,839,796. It's a tax rate of $14.54 per thousand. That raised $448,617 for the Urban Renewal District. That is expected to be a million in 2021. My guess is that's really going to be 2022, because we have so much assessed value coming in through the hotel and the apartments and Osprey Point and other projects that are coming in. So we're going to see a significant jump in the amount of revenue coming into the Urban Renewal Agency, and we're looking forward to that because that will change the dynamic of how our funding is working, so. But I really wanted to just kind of give you just a general thing, just to remind you that this is different. We're talking about different pots of money, we're talking about different way of calculating things, we're talking about different opportunities. But I think the important point here is, you know, we are trying, the Urban Renewal Agency, to spend money to increase the value of properties, to increase the livability of the community, to remove blight, to maintain effective traffic systems, and improve and retain existing businesses. And so that's a very different goals and tasks than council normally does. Normally, we're not doing things that cost us money to improve and retain existing businesses. And so, I kind of wanted Sean to come up and show you how some of the projects have worked and how some of those examples work, so you just kind of have an idea of, in more tangible terms, what that means.
Great. Mayor, Council, good to be here. I will try to keep you awake and not keep you listening for too long. So, you're all familiar with how we do business here at Independence. You know, we really are all about engaging the community, setting a vision, and then pursuing that vision. And really, that's the foundation of a good Urban Renewal District, is, Urban Renewal is really a tool for achieving a community's vision, and that's, I think, kind of how we've approached this. So, you know, you think back to 1996, when the first downtown development plan was created, the community said, you know, look, we really want to change our fortune, change our direction. If we're going to do that, we need the downtown to be the vibrant hub of the community. You know, we need to make that the place that people are going to hang out, to do business, to have fun. And so we have worked with the Urban Renewal District to essentially try to achieve that by making calculated and strategic investments into infrastructure in and around the downtown. First one is the downtown streetscape. This is downtown in probably about 2000. You know, narrow sidewalks, old streetlights, you know, this is it a few years ago. And again, you know, kind of this is an Urban Renewal District investment along with grants and other sources, really with the intent of beautifying, you know, remember, eliminate blight, create economic opportunities. So the intent is to beautify it, create the infrastructure that makes people actually want to be walking around downtown, to be enjoying the downtown. Because as a city, you know, we can't really open businesses, but we can bring people to the downtown, which then hopefully will people will recognize and look to create new businesses to take advantage of that. You know, I don't know how many of you were around long enough to know what this place was. This is the Old Hop Warehouse. This is sort of the other side of that block. And if you, for those of you that didn't get to see this, the railroad tracks and the water tower may be your, you know, kind of landmarks there, but this was a big Urban Renewal project. District, this is the city already owned that warehouse, the district purchased those three homes, had two of them burnt down, and actually, if you recognize the one on the far end down there, is actually now the Pink House Cafe, got sold for 500 bucks and relocated. And, you know, and then what happened was, the Urban Renewal District invested in the parking lot and the streetscape around that whole block, and then leased the space to the movie theater. So, while it was a city, or, excuse me, Urban Renewal investment into the property, and a fairly substantial one, you know, the $4 million cinema was built, and then the property tax revenues from that new construction went back into the Urban Renewal District to essentially pay back the money that was used to do that project. And so then, of course, the, you know, the strategy of that, you've got a movie theater in the downtown, you know, 130,000 people plus coming every year to the movies. They're going to want to go out to dinner, do those kind of things, too. That's bringing a new customer base to the downtown. Amphitheater, again, you know, it's just kind of a, it was, you know, it depends on your definition of blight, but it was definitely an underutilized asset. You know, worked with the National Guard. But then Urban Renewal District, again, as well as grants, as well as a lot of volunteer work resulted in the amphitheater. You know, again, taking, making a calculated investment, you know, creating an asset to both beautify and draw people to the downtown, which we were then able to program with events and activities to, again, create a customer base for those, for the community. The, you know, this is another one you there may not recognize, but it's kind of fun going through the little history tour here. But, you know, the library was an Urban Renewal project, again, among many other funding sources, community and volunteer investments and donations as well. But again, strategically located downtown, bring people to the downtown, you know, clean up a brown field, so you really are reducing, eliminating blight. You know, and again, by bringing people downtown, you're creating that economic opportunity. The mayor actually mentioned this earlier when talking about Robin, but everybody kind of recognizes the benefit of the cinema in terms of bringing people downtown, you know, 130,000 people a year. There is actually a like amount of people that go through the library every year. So that's a great example of, you know, a resource that people don't really expect being a way to bring people and create customers in the downtown. You know, I think then, you know, with these investments, you know, these calculated investments, you know, in some cases, like the movie theaters are pretty obvious, okay, you're bringing people to the downtown. Others, like the streetscape and the amphitheater, are a little more removed, but you start seeing the impact of that with the downtown. You know, people, business owners start fixing up their buildings. The Urban Renewal District has also been involved with that, with facade grants, working with business owners to help them fix up their buildings. You know, that also feeds back into the district. You know, when people, you know, just look at these buildings, and then, you know, you look at what they are now, that's added value that's then feeding back into the district, and it's also a great example of the benefit that the district is creating from those investments that people are looking around saying, hey, this is a place that's worth investing in, that we can actually develop new businesses. I got that one, too. And then, and then just, you know, I thought this was an interesting example up in our industrial areas, not just about the downtown. This was the northern entrance to Independence, Highway 51. And, you know, again, you know, it's maybe not exactly what people think about with blight, but, you know, you look at what it is today with the sidewalks, with the bike lanes, with the center turn lane which facilitates access to those industrial businesses. You know, that's all adding value, creating more opportunity, and just straight beautification as well. That's all beneficial to the community. And then the last one, of course, you know, is the Old Valley Concrete Site across from the amphitheater, slightly older picture. But this is another one where, you know, the Urban Renewal District acquired the property, got it ready for development, invested money in the infrastructure to essentially get it, you know, shovel-ready for developers. And then, you know, the actual development that's going on there, the tax revenue from that is going back into the district to pay off, you know, not just the funding for that property, but also some of the larger, you know, the debt of the Urban Renewal District. I talked fast, and that was a lot of information, so happy to answer any questions.
Questions at this point?
Thank you for the little flashback into what Independence was like in high school.
I just tripped on that for a while, right?
It was, it was, you know, it's late, and it excited me.
What I'm going to do now is that we have an executive session for the purpose of conferring with our city agency's real property negotiator, and the Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions pursuant to ORS 1926602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, or representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. This time, the agency will adjourn the conference room for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session has adjourned, we will return to open session in the council chamber.
Can we stay here? Can't we just close the doors?
We can close the door if you want to, and that's fine. We don't anticipate any action coming after executive session. We'll just say the word adjourn. So, whatever you'd like to do, we can just close the door, and we'll go to executive session.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.